Okay, great. Welcome, everybody, to the 25th meeting of the Planning Board. We are here in the Carol Blue Conference Room. I'm Emily Ennis, Chair.
Peter Jackson.
Alex Waitzad.
Yeah Duffy.
Bernie Lynch.
Diane Coligan, Secretary.
And we will be shortly joined by the Town Planner. I should mention that this is being broadcast live. Apparently we have to say that now.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. That's part of the new open meeting law regulations. You have to actually announce that we are broadcasting this. First item on the agenda, administrative items and the approval of the past minutes. So these would be the minutes for May 26. Do we have any changes?
I think that I've given Diane a few suggestions. I don't think we should defer through all.
Fair enough.
I think if anybody else has comments, they should get those to Diane also.
Okay.
So that we can do it one more time.
Great. Then we will defer to the next meeting, absolutely. Our future meetings are June 23. And we're going to try and be upstairs for the 23rd, see if that's open. And now we have a second item on our agenda, which is Citizen Speak. And seeing no citizens.
Who's a citizen?
There is a citizen out there.
Someone got there.
Citizen, do you wish to speak?
I'm good, I'm good.
You're good, okay, great. So, we have some time before our continued public hearing. And unfortunately, our, yes, Eddie, did you have your hand up?
No.
You look like you were going to add something there.
No, just trying to look, I'm busy.
We were going to have our Town Planner give his report. And Bill, you're on to give your report. You have nine minutes before our first public hearing.
Nice. Should take two minutes.
Stretch it out.
Well, also, Bill, we were thinking that we might have a health segment and a fashion segment.
Oh, and news and weather and sports as well.
So feel free to wander.
Extemporize.
So what is that tie you're wearing today?
I was watching the cameras on where, I didn't see that one. Thanks, Mike. Okay, I'll start with the Swats. And congratulations to Matt Duffy and John Magliosi, both who got drafted Tuesday and Wednesday of this week.
Excellent.
Matt by the Houston Astros and John by the Tampa Bay Rays.
Fantastic.
For my update, I've been working on the paperwork for the subdivision at 683-685 Brushhill Road. Been working on the paper, paperwork for the wind turbine and making some changes to the site plan, the final site plan because of all the appeals that have been going on. I have a date that I have to meet before the end of June, that I have to get a new plan to DEP. Been working on the Green Communities grant that we got, coordinating where the money is going, how we're getting it there, seeing if there are updates to different projects.
Can you talk about those projects? Or are there still too much up in the air for that?
We have. I'll probably forget one, but I know we have, I can't give you the exact amounts, I know that we have money to put into the planning and design for new pumps at the four pump, new pump stations, or revamped pump stations. I know that's $20,000. I know there's $40,000 in there for the wind turbine. We have money in there to change lighting at the Pierce School. We have money in there to address some of the heating and air conditioning units at Collypod School that will cost us between $600 and $6,500. We'll get savings of that in a year and a half. All of these projects in the Green Communities will result in energy reduction costs to the community. There are two heating switches, one for the East Milton Fire Station, one for the Police Station. There are motion detector switches for this building so that if a light, you walk in a room, the light comes on, there'll be switches very similar to what are at the high school. When you walk in, the lights come on, when you walk out in this certain period of time, if you didn't shut it off, it'll go off by itself. That'll be throughout this building. There is insulation for the Council on Aging Building and insulation for the Police Station. I've got some money in there for revamping some of the streetlights down in the Central Ave Business District and Adam Street in that business district. We're looking to change some of those lights. They're on a meter that gets directly paid by the town, so if we change those out, hopefully to an LED light, we can tremendously cut the electric bill. I think that's all I have on those.
What were the next steps in the next little parking study? Where are we with that?
Next step is a presentation to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And a date for that has not, I haven't determined a date with that, with Mr. Murn.
Who's going to present?
Can we attend that?
It's a public meeting, everybody can attend. The Business Citizen Advisory Committee and the Planning Board will both be invited. It is a public presentation by Howard Stein Hudson of the final report. I get lots of calls now because Howard Stein Hudson actually has put this out there, they've gotten lots of comment from national firms. I'm getting calls from parking meter companies, we'd like to give a presentation. I got a call from a guy today wanting to do signage and wayfaring presentation to the town. If the town's looking at doing new signs, they'd like to give a presentation.
That's good, isn't it?
It's very good.
Yeah, it's great that there's.
Very good.
I mean, if they want to give a presentation, presumably we'll let them do it.
We will. I'm not sure about the parking meters part, but undoubtedly hundreds of firms would like the opportunity to make a presentation.
That's going to excite people in East Milton for, you know, parking meters.
Actually, they're starting?
It's like taking property, which we're not going to do.
People in East Milton walk down there, we don't drive, we walk down.
There's actually been a lot of study on parking meters and how they can be used to manage, it's a different view of parking, it's a view of parking as an asset that needs to be managed. And using parking meters and different rates to enforce things like allowing 30 minutes in front of the popular stores, but for a higher rate, and further away, two hours for a much cheaper rate, so that people who are going to be there longer will get to pay the cheaper rate, and the people who just want to dash in and out. And in some communities, it's been very useful, and in other communities, it doesn't work at all, so.
Have you ever priced a parking meter?
Have I ever priced the cost of doing one?
It's very expensive.
No, no, no.
And the enforcement, who's going to?
Well, that's another issue. Some towns use, obviously, their police department, excuse me, and some hire people to do it.
There's actually, APA has been sending a lot of email blasts around lately, and one of them was APA planning books, and one of them was the high cost of free parking. There's a whole lot of that kind of literature that's out there, you know, showing that having free parking could potentially cause urban sprawl. It makes people have a car, it makes them drive, doesn't, you know, help with walking, it doesn't help with new urbanism.
Then there are firms that outsource the management and the installation and all of that as well, so something to look at.
Other than that.
That's pretty good, that's bang to 6:40. Not bad. Which brings us, yes, sorry Eddie, did you have?
I'm just going to add an anecdote if I could.
Absolutely.
My friend who's passed away now, Joe Flaherty from East Milton, he used to say that people don't want to park in front of a store they're going to. He says they want to park inside the store that they're going to. And my corollary was that the first thing you do when you go shopping, especially in East Milton, is you shop for the best parking space first.
Add an anecdote.
Pass it down. I know that I did a parking study for the town of Duxbury before I came here, and one of the things was they felt they had a parking issue of not enough parking spaces in Hall's Corner, which is their major commercial center. When I went back and counted all of the spaces, came back with pictures with all those numbers on it showing where all the parking spaces were, and sat there for a little while to figure out who was going where, their problem wasn't one of finding, it wasn't adequate parking numbers, it was where to park. And you would come into the square and you'd go and get your cup of coffee, and you'd get in your car and you'd go down to the bakery and you'd get your muffin, and get in your car and go return your movie, all within the same square. And as I started giving the presentation, the co-chairman of the committee said, "I want to start right off and say, 'I'm guilty.'" And she didn't realize it until somebody could just show, "Look, if you had parked here, you could have walked here." Be right, we just don't do that. And the square is the same, a lot of people don't walk. A lot of other people talk about, "Well, I don't mind walking," but it's knowing how to take and do the patterns in the square. And because there's no signage down there, directing how those patterns work.
Right.
That becomes part of the issue.
The wayfinding is going to be a key to that.
Yep.
So, absolutely.
One thing that I know, and I suggest you probably should read, is in item three, they have a section on the pseudoscience of planning for parking. And you presumably should take a look at that.
Are you suggesting I should get that book?
I think that if it's pseudoscience, we should know it.
It's $25 for, I assume because we're APA members, and the budget can stand it, and it's going to be something that we're going to be talking about with the parking study. Yeah, I think, I think we ought to consider that, and we can pull out what would be important for us to read. All right, 6:40, oh, sorry Pete.
Bill, on the wind turbine, aren't we under some time constraints in getting that under construction, or is it going to be another year now?
Our time constraints are put on us by Natural Heritage, that we cannot work in that particular area due to some of the critics there. We can only work October 15th to April 15th. And we are constrained by a, Corey Hills filed an injunction against us.
They filed a suit?
They filed, they filed an injunction against the town to.
Request for an injunction.
Request for an injunction to not allow us to proceed with construction.
Which hasn't been acted on.
It has gone before the judge, she has not ruled on it yet. It's been a while, but.
Who is the judge?
I'm sorry, I forget.
Lady Kevin?
It is a woman judge, and I wasn't there, I don't know. I gave testimony to it, I know Rich Kleiman did, I gave all kinds of maps, plans, documents. I know that John Flynn and Brandon Moss made the presentation. I know that Corey Hills has appealed the Conservation Commission's order of conditions, and I know that that's why I'm dealing with the new site plan for that at a request by DEP, at a sitewalk for superseding, requested superseding order vacating Milton's order of conditions by Corey Hills. So.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing number one at 6:40 PM, 131 Elliott Street, site plan review and special permit for redevelopment. This is a continued public hearing. In the meetings since I was last here, since I missed the last meeting, I've spoken to Steve Connelly on the phone, and I met with Steve and Jerry Connelly on Tuesday along with Kevin Murn, the Town Administrator. They are aware that at the last meeting, which Steve was present with us, that we had significant questions about whether or not their building met the zoning. They would like to have time to address this, and what they ultimate plan, because they wanted to talk with me and to Kevin about how this is moving forward. The ultimate plan is that they are going to take some time to come back with a chart of the zoning regulations and how they plan to meet those zoning regulations based on what we discussed with them, and based on their reading of the zoning. And then once we have looked at that chart and discussed that chart with them, they will come back with a new plan based on that zoning that we agreed to. So they've asked that we continue this meeting. I had originally suggested the end of August, but they felt they'd need more time. So they asked that we continue the public hearing until September 15th, which is our first meeting in September. And in the meantime, they will produce that chart, should be our first meeting in September. You're looking puzzled, Bill. Check the calendar, I think that was right. At any rate, they will, in the meantime, they will come up with this chart. I'm supposed to have another meeting with them to review it, and then pass it straight on to the Planning Board for their review and comment. And then they will come back to us, and I've said, as I've said, produce a new plan based on the zoning. So, does anybody have any questions? Yes, Eddie?
I met with a young guy in prompt to down East Milton recently, he lives on Waldo Road, his name escapes me. But he was talking at length about the project, and he said that, in his opinion, the project should have a brick exterior, much like 36 Central Avenue. And his, his feeling was that it would match the old, and actually would have a little bit of a balance to 36 Central, too, two prominent locations in the renewal area. So I just passed that along. He, he thought that it should be as striking as possible, and the presentation we've had up to date here has not been a striking, a striking building at all, so I just passed that along to the board.
I absolutely agree, and one of the things I said to the Connelly's was that, in my personal opinion, obviously not speaking with the board, the two issues that we had the strongest disagreements with were the fact that we believed that the building did not meet the zoning, and second, our aesthetic concerns for a building that was going to be the key pivot point to revitalization of the area. And they agreed. And their, their desire was to come back with, you know, first settle on the zoning, and once we got that settled, to work on the aesthetic issues. So, and we went over some of the things that we talked about in the last meeting, but I said, you know, this meeting isn't really about this, about what we said at last meeting. This meeting is about what are our next steps going forward. So, Pete, you had a question?
Bill, has Largess Forest been paid?
Kevin?
Did you ask that, yes?
Kevin Murn is dealing with that directly with Mr. Largess, Mr. Connelly, and he'll see that it gets paid.
Well, he hasn't been paid.
Yes, wait, 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 this was a subject of some conversation today. Bill and I and Kevin have been back and forth with each other about this. I have received assurances that it will be paid.
Sure.
Shortly.
From?
From Kevin on behalf of Steve. Kevin spoke to both Steve and Mr. Largess personally today, is my understanding from the emails I received. It will be paid. And it will be paid before we talk about zoning again.
Well.
Otherwise, we won't be talking about zoning again.
It seems to me that we should.
I see, Pete.
Sorry, Pete, but we'll get to, it seems to me on Largess, we should not, we should continue it for two weeks to make sure it gets paid. And if he isn't paid within, by the time of our next meeting, we should continue the hearing, and if they're done, they're done, and then we'll take appropriate action.
Pete?
Yeah, I was going to suggest the same thing. I don't think we should discuss or take any action, just continue this over till the next hearing, and, and continue forever until Largess gets paid, and at that point, we can discuss any action.
I would agree.
The other suggestion that I would have is to request that Mr. Connelly be here when we discuss this suggested course of action, so he can hear our discussion.
Ed?
Another sensitive matter, Madam Chair.
Well, I think we made a motion, right?
Well, I think we're just discussing things, and then we'll make a motion.
Yeah, absolutely. Eddie, please.
We'll live and track, Madam Chair. Did the sensitive question of the tree come up when you had your meetings with Mr. Sheres Connelly?
The tree is an interesting issue. Their feeling, of course, is that the tree is gone, they will not be applying for the bonus. There's no, there's no thought of coming back and applying for the bonus with some other thing. They would apply solely for what's under the zoning without it. They would obviously prefer to move on from the issue of the tree. I said I would bring it back to the board and see what they say. Because again, I cannot, of course, speak to the other members of the board in a meeting such as this. So I think that will be up to us to decide. They would like to move forward with a new project. We would obviously need to discuss how we feel about that.
The tree is obviously a dead issue. A dead horse, that we don't have to beat a great deal.
I guess I disagree, but we'll discuss that one to the President.
But it does seem to me that their idea that they need three months to read the zoning, I would say that they'd be able to read the zoning in three days and could discuss, it would be real, three months to read the zoning.
Four weeks or six weeks since their last meeting with us?
They last met with us at the beginning of May?
It's been four weeks, they certainly could have done this analysis of the zoning at that time. But I prefer not to discuss it until we're here, I think we should just, you know, just move this along, and so they have the benefit of our discussion.
But it seems to me that it would be nice to suggest to them that the timetable seems preposterous.
Somewhat excessive.
And that the zoning can be read by their lawyer, and, you know, if they have, if their lawyer has issues, then the lawyer should write them out. But it isn't going to take, it isn't going to take until September.
As I said, I offered them the end of August, and that was not accepted. There was some thought that they might wish to meet with you, Alex, as the author of said zoning, prior to their next meeting.
I'm happy to meet with them anytime. In fact, we have told them time and time and time again that we're willing to meet with them. And the idea of losing another three months with that dangerous building sitting there is not really acceptable to me. And I would think that when they start planning the revisions that are necessary, because everything that we brought up is basically in the zone. And they can, they can read it, and they can torture the zoning, but in the end, they're going to have to comply with the zoning. And the building has a lot of problems, and they should start discussing the problems with us, rather than, you know, saying they need three months to read the zoning.
Anyone else? Eddie?
I had a chance meeting several days ago, Emily, to discuss the building with an enthusiastic retired town employee, so I think I know who I'm talking about. He said that the inside of the building, the walls are crumbling inside, and the ceiling is coming, the top is coming down inside, the ceiling is coming in. He said nobody should enter the building.
Okay.
In his opinion, he said, "There were not chemicals stored anywhere in the building." He thought it was mostly just an empty, empty shell. But still hazardous. I said, "It seems to me that maybe, even before they start tearing it down, we should send a robot in with the cameras, you know, and get as much information as we could, rather than just start tearing it down." But he thought it was empty, in his opinion it was empty, but he might like to come in someday and talk to us, too, because he's got other thoughts on the matter. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, Bill?
You came up with the date of September 15.
Yeah, I believe that was it.
That's the third Thursday.
Third Thursday.
The first, the eighth, and the 15th of Thursdays.
Okay, so I understand. Sorry, be the eighth as well. But I understand that we would like to continue it for two weeks, so why don't we go ahead and do that now, so that we can have our discussion? I apologize, Steve was not here tonight, because I thought since we were going to continue it, he didn't necessarily need to be present, so, but I will let him know that we'd like to see him in two weeks' time to continue this discussion, and that the Planning Board is eager to move ahead. And that you would be willing to discuss his agenda. Will need to be paid by the next meeting.
He's going to have to be paid, or?
We will have to have proof that he's paid by the next meeting.
Well, receipt payment.
Yeah.
Mr. Murn is the one who's supposed to be putting the check in the envelope, so he's the one who said, "He's taking care of it, it's off my desk, he's taking care of it personally."
On his personal account?
I hope that means that he and Steve, he is ensuring that Steve is writing the check himself.
He is himself.
What he is, what he is, what the one thing that is necessary is that we get an invoice from Mr. Largess.
We do have.
To Stephen Connelly.
To Steve, yes.
He's already placed.
That has been discussed today.
Whether or not, if he's willing to, if Largess is willing to do that, that would be.
You mean a receipt?
No, a bill.
Well, he's already billed him.
He billed the town.
No, he billed, he billed Connelly.
All right, well, in any event.
We will have, we'll invoice to Connelly, and we will have the receipt proving payment, okay? By the next meeting.
All right. Or else.
Or else. So the next meeting was not June 23rd, oh, no, you want to do the very next meeting, Pete? Very next meeting, all of us, yes? All right.
Shall we vote on that, just to?
If we're all in agreement, we don't need to vote. 6:40 on June 23rd, acceptable to everyone?
What happens that?
That we will have, continue this hearing on 131 Elliott to 6:40 on June 23rd.
Well, I said, Pete wanted to have Connelly's here at that time.
Well, I will invite them. I will invite them to be here at that time.
And if they're not here, it is highly unlikely that we're going to continue the matter further.
I will mention that that is the opinion of one member of the board. Also, all right. Then, in a genius of quantum mechanics, we have also got a public hearing for 310 Granite Avenue scheduled for 6:40 PM.
And they're not here.
And they're not here, so shall we continue it until the 23rd?
So move.
No, let's, let's see if they show up.
Roddy's here, but.
Hey, we were just worried about that.
Is he supposed to be here?
Yeah.
Twenty minutes to go.
Hi.
Hi.
We got this one here.
Is that, you have this one here?
Okay, we got that.
If you want, hi, how are you? Are you expecting someone else?
The engineer's supposed to be here, too.
Okay, so if you want, we can take up something else.
Bob's supposed to be here, and so is the engineer. Bob told me the engineer's coming.
I guess I'm going to have to.
All right.
All right, so why don't we wait for Bob, and we'll take up something else while we wait, so that.
Is he coming? I don't think so.
You don't think Bob's coming?
He's not here, he said he's going to be here.
All right, well, we can, we can actually hit the.
Hit the high point?
The paperwork for 683. You have all of the 683 Brushhill Road, the subdivision documents. We do not have the covenant, so therefore, we don't have a decision. You have all of the plans.
All right.
For that. And I would suggest that we put this on to June 23rd.
Let me explain why the covenant, what should be in the covenant.
Yeah.
One thing in the covenant is that it should have something about their respecting the do not desert, do not disturb zones.
Right.
And there should be something in the covenant about the obligation to maintain a light at each driveway. And the lights should be probably the same as approved by the Condominium Association. But each driveway will have, each homeowner will have a light at the end of the driveway which will provide some illumination for the street.
There's no standard, you don't think that's a standard, of different types of eight-foot poles, 10-foot poles, one-foot poles?
Well, that's, you know, that's, that's a matter of interest. I mean, it does seem to me that maybe it should be a light standard approved by the Condominium Association and the Planning Board. But this, what, you see, I need the.
The homeowner association, right?
Homeowner Association documents, so I can see what sort of conditions.
Okay.
Are required beyond that.
Okay, and then you're working on the document for us? Okay, and then you're working on the document for us once you see it?
Now, shouldn't, shouldn't the lights be all wired together so that the lights come on together and go off?
Well, this wasn't the discussion.
I understand that. But in retrospect, it seems to me that if we're all gonna have the same light, same standard sort of light and so forth, if one person puts it on and six decide not to put it on, whatever.
Well, maybe the homeowner association documents will say they've got to turn them on.
Well, if we're gonna do some wiring, I think perhaps it should be wired together and that should be noted somewhere.
Well, if you do then, it, it does become a, it is, there would be streetlights and we would, we would have to, it seems to me, we'd have to specify where they would be. And, but I, not that I'm against that. I'm not, I, I'm not against having streetlights maintained by the homeowner association, but the idea of avoiding that obligation of the association by putting the individual requirement on the homeowners seemed, you know, I didn't have a huge problem.
I think one they have just like a quaint country lane.
Well, that was the idea.
So, you're not talking about those streetlights here. You're talking about something much smaller that just illuminates the end of the driveway.
A light at the end of each driveway.
And I think the notion of they all come on and go off together gets rid of that whole notion. It becomes more like street lighting, even though it doesn't meet the standard, instead of a country lane where some people's lights are on, some people's lights are off, some people keep them on, you know, for a longer time. I just assume they have something more informal where the homeowners gotta switch and turns it on or turns it off. Because otherwise, it's really streetlights, although we're not calling them so.
Well, with underground wiring and water and short circuits, we do want these lights to be, to be used.
You could always make them solar lights.
I think that that would, I-
Good idea.
I wanna see what they put in the homeowner covenant about these lights.
All right, so you're going to, we'll see what they put in the covenant then?
And then we're gonna discuss what the, where we're going to be going.
Are they gonna plow the street?
Well, they're gonna have, they're going to have the responsibility to plow it if the town does. But we're not going to say that the town is not going to plow it. If the town is willing to, just because the town seems to plow a number of similar streets. And so-
Anything else on this?
Well, I, if the lawyer who's doing this gets it to me, I can certainly give him-
Do you have a covenant for us?
A ball.
No, we haven't, we're working on it, but we haven't got the covenant yet.
Okay.
But the covenant will be subject to the approval of the planning board.
We were just discussing that.
Well, we were discussing how it would, it would address the street lighting situation, the obligation of the homeowners to have a light at the end of their driveway and the, what the do not disturb zones entail.
The do not disturb zone?
Yeah.
The buffer zones for the-
The zones around the-
The buffer zones.
Oh, okay, yeah, yes.
And, and once I see it, and once I see it, I might have some other suggestions for you.
Yes, indeed, and we'll be looking forward to your input on that.
Okay.
Anything else?
I guess the only thing I'd like to say is, you know, I would like to have whatever documents we're reviewing in advance of the meeting, have a chance to read them rather than get them in the middle of the day of the meeting.
Yep.
But we do have, we do have a final subdivision plan. And what I was going to ask the engineer is, do we need anything else like the ladder from the DPW? I mean, is everything that is incorporated listed on the plan or somehow do we have to feel around to figure out what else we need to incorporate?
My understanding is the DPW is still reviewing this, is that correct?
Yes.
683, 685? Are we going to get a letter from them or how?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if we're going to, if they put it up, I mean, presumably, they're not gonna, if it requires changes to the plans, then we'll have a further revision.
Yes, but I don't think it's going to. Neither did the engineers themselves. They think they-
The drainage is specified on this plan.
Yep.
Yep.
And so we don't need to incorporate the drainage calculations, et cetera.
This plan does, you know, have a list of waivers requested, but there's no verbal description of how, of what-
There is a book. They, they set up in this-
Yeah, we received that already.
Well, but we, in the decision, we will discuss the waivers.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we have to write those in. We're not gonna do a lot of what's on the plan.
But, but they did, they did specify what their waivers were.
You got one of these.
Too many sheets of paper, that's right. Anything else on 683, 685? No? All right. So, that will be, well, no, the public hearing is not on that, so we'll just put it on hold business for next meeting. All right, so now we will continue, well, open the continued public hearing for 310 Granite Avenue.
Good evening. I'm Attorney Bob Sheffield. I have with me Ramiz Romanhavas, who is the owner of the Milton Gas Station. And over the past two months, we've been discussing this project and I hope that we have something tonight that you will all be very pleased with. First, there was some concern on the size of the aisles. The plan you have in front of you shows a full 16 feet between the island and the buildings. And in that last foot, there will be a series of bumpers to ensure the safety of the building and of the people inside. Furthermore, we have the full 20 feet between the islands. This was recommended by the engineer as the ideal size and we have been able to establish that and maintain that. We have 11 and a half feet between the island and the sidewalk. There will be 12 parking spaces made available. We have eliminated the sidewalk that exists near the islands for safety purposes. We are repositioning the door so that the access to the front of the gas station will be located here, which is beyond the islands and again, provides for a greater degree of safety. We will be having the door that already exists here for the people that are waiting for their cars to be serviced. We are closing up this bay and replacing it with two windows. And we'll be having the handicap space right, right there. We believe that this will be an excellent design. Will provide for fluid activity through the, through the site. Will provide for the safety of all the patrons using the facility. There was a question that came up at last, the last hearing, and that is the zoning requirements as far as frontage from the sidewalk. And a suggestion was made at that time that it was either zero or six feet. Actually, there is no zoning requirement in the business district for frontage, so it can be zero feet, one feet, six feet, 20 feet. And that's not subject to a zoning restriction, so therefore, we'll not have to go before the Board of Appeals on that issue. The canopy is better defined and shown and it will be 45 by 47 feet. There was some suggestion that the welcome to Milton, East Milton Square sign was unwelcoming, so therefore, that has been eliminated and that block will now be gone. And there was also a suggestion that the flower pots that were going to be on the islands would not, may not be kept up and would be a derogatory appearance rather than a positive appearance. So, that also has been eliminated. And I would hope and trust that this addresses all the concerns of the planning board and that we'll be able to receive approval this evening.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
How, what are the measurements on the top of the canopy?
They would be 45 by 47.
What is the measurement of the ban?
It looks to be about four feet high. Same as it was three feet last, last weekend.
For the canopy? Three feet, it's a standard size.
Three feet?
Three feet.
Anything else?
I was also asked if I could draft an amendment to the, an amendment so that it could be reviewed and approved if that is in accordance with your wishes.
We'll just wait while it's being passed around. Yes?
I have a very strange request. Do you have an air, air supply being put on this station? And if so, where?
Three of them.
At the what?
They stole a couple of ones.
I know that they've stolen them. I know that they've hit them. I've seen them. I know that the poles have been bent over. But the, somebody asked me this morning, "If this is a service station, where do I put air in my tires?"
Well, it's coming. I mean-
I don't know the answer.
We were supposed to be replacing it last week, but the guy didn't know we need a footing in the ground to do so. He need to pour the concrete. Today was a bad day too to do it.
Really?
But it's coming up and two days, it's already been purchased every day.
Who are we gonna put it?
Behind the sign. It's here. In the corner where the, where it used to be, the same spot.
All right.
Any questions?
So, that's a, you're not eliminating the air.
No.
You're not eliminating the air?
No, no, it's over there.
It's on that island, behind the sign.
Okay.
It's always been there. It's gonna be there.
All right, well, air is important.
No, it's a $3,000 machine. I already purchased it two, three weeks ago.
All right, nice.
What else? Any other questions?
And it's a heated machine too, so people can use that in cold weather. Yes, the most of the season.
Good to know.
Hot air. We got lots of that. There we go.
Emily, I have a, Madam Chair, a question on some safety issues on the delivery of gasoline. I don't have enough of these for everybody, maybe. And they're wet from the rain gun into the car. But you can pass them, one down, two down that way, one for Bob and his. One of the outlined is, I'll have to see it. The hole in Granite Avenue is on the bottom of the plan. And to the right of the plan, you'll see a yellow area shaded in yellow.
Yes.
And to the left, you'll see your station shaded, shaded in red. And the station shaded in yellow, I only had time to put on one graphic here. When they get their delivery of gasoline, I think you might have seen this situation, have you?
Yeah, I see. What do you mean? What's happened?
Pardon me?
What happened?
Can you see what I have with the cab here of the delivery truck? It goes over, it goes over the sidewalk and out into the traveled way.
That's up, right?
I, I'm not saying it shows. But have you seen that situation up there? Have you seen it?
Yeah, I see it.
Have you seen it in the past up at that gas station?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Well, if you look at both stations, both stations are relatively the same distance from the street, about 47 feet. I don't know where these underground tanks are located here. My question is, obviously, we're not gonna tolerate this here anymore. We don't, we're not gonna tolerate it at your station.
Never at this station had the delivery truck on the street when it is pouring gasoline.
However, there are new tanks going in, Bob.
Yes.
So, what I want shown, Bob, let me just finish. What I want shown is the delivery truck shown on here delivering the gasoline, being located entirely on the lot. That's all I'm putting after. That it's capable of delivering the gasoline while the truck is entirely on the lot and not hanging over the sidewalk on the lowway.
It's not on the sidewalk.
I want, I wanna see it. I want, show it to me on the, the delivery truck, delivering where it is, the position where it's unloading gasoline. That's what I'm after.
I've been there 10 years in this place. Never the truck is on the sidewalk or any place is that on my property.
Don't you have new tanks?
And we have the safer place to park the truck.
Bobby, aren't there new, aren't there new tanks in here now?
What's that?
Aren't there new tanks here now?
Right.
Are they in use?
No, it's bringing new tanks. It's too-
Okay, what I want is to have the truck shown relative to the new tanks. Shown on here that it's not hanging over the sidewalk or the street. That's all for sure.
I think Bill has something to-
I see both hands. Both hands. I want it shown. So, we're having trouble finding some standards on the length of the trucks. And Emily did come up with this architectural graphic standard. However, they don't have the stick, the length of a, a tolling delivery truck or the size that would be going up established. So, somebody will have to get the size of a delivery truck for us and then have it shown on the plan in relation to where the tanks are.
Well, but, I mean, if in 10 years, he hasn't infringed on the sidewalk and the, the tanks appear to be, well, they're conveniently located to bring the tank in next to the building.
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, we can see where the tanks are located on the plan. Bill, you wanted to address that?
Yeah, I took the same issue to the fire safety officer and to the fire chief. They actually did go down and talk to the owner of Milton Fuel down at 352. And if you have seen it in the last two days, they're actually on the sidewalk, not in the street anymore. They actually now are putting a cone in front of the truck, but even that isn't acceptable, but that's where they are right now. When you go down and you look at 310 for Milton Gas, Eddie, you forgot to grab the, the last piece of their lot. They're over beside L. Thomas's, so they have the entire front and the truck can go into the back. Their tanks right now-
Go from this side.
Their tanks are right now in here. And what they're talking about putting the new one is under this pad that's right here, so that when they come in, they'll be like this.
Where will they come in?
They can come in right through here.
From all the way, where the truck coming from over there, straight to used to be.
They go straight in. They empty out and they come up.
Very easy.
They actually drive, they drive in one side, they can drive out the other.
I don't think they'll be able to do that with-
All this lot is, belongs to the station. All this lot here is belong to the station, so we really don't have to go this way or anything. Very simple.
This is significantly larger square footage than Milton Fuel. That has never been a problem in the past. It won't ever be a problem in the future.
And it's easy enough to say delivery truck shall be on the premises while making delivery.
We can simply add that into the site plan.
Well, if, if they have to hang over the sidewalk, it's unacceptable, acceptable to me. It's a simple matter. Find a standard graphic, show it on here in relation to the new, to the new, to the new storage.
Couldn't you put it, I mean-
The truck is only forty-
Just looking at it.
The truck is only 40 feet long. A 40-foot truck would be anywhere in here. A 40-foot truck would be anywhere in here. Their property line is here to here. The 40-foot truck is here.
Either way, it can go in.
You're suggesting that the truck and the, let the fluid out at any point in the 40 feet, only certain points it can come out.
Well, because there's a hose. Is there a hose?
He has.
Okay.
All I'm asking for is a very...
He's got 95 feet.
I'm asking for a very, very simple request. Show me where the, where the new tanks are and the truck delivering the fluid to the new tanks. All I want, show me, that's all.
He's got 90 feet. If you put the truck beyond the tanks.
We have the tanks on the plan.
In and out with the truck there.
We have the tanks on the plan.
We have this.
We've already got that. So all you need to do is look at the scaled figure which Bill provided you, and you can see that they will fit.
Is the existing against the new ones.
Right. Are you suggesting that at any point, the truck can just offload at any point, it can only offload at certain points where the hoses come out?
Right, his hoses go out.
The hoses come out on the side. All right, you're not going to give it to me then. You're not going to give me the plan. Show me that.
We do not have that plan, but we can give you the insurance that it has not been a problem in the past, and it will not be a problem in the past.
It can't be a problem in the past, Bob, because the tanks aren't in use yet. It can't be a problem in the past. The tanks aren't in use yet. That's the tanks I'm worried about.
This has been a gas station since at least 1947. I've never heard of that problem in the last 60 years.
Are there new tanks going in there or not?
There are additional tanks going in there.
There are new tanks going in. Now, the old truck can only deliver the offload at certain points. It can't just say, well, let's lock it, because it has to be, the hoses have to be in relation to where the tanks are.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I want to see. I want to see that. That's all I want.
I think, I think we understand what Ed wants to see. Any other questions on this? Bernie, do you have anything?
No.
Alex, any questions?
I think that what we'll say is the little landscape area will be landscaped in accordance with a landscaping design approved by the board.
Okay.
Landscaping could be approved. We'll say that deliveries shall be made on-site. Delivery truck shall make deliveries on-site.
Correct. Okay. Anything else?
We're going to say that, we're going to mention that the canopy, any, anything, the color, what color is the canopy going to be?
We haven't discussed that with the sign review committee, but it will be consistent and attractive.
It is a blue, the way it's...
All right, I think what we'll say is the color and...
This is the blue.
Color and...
Match the building?
Signage on the canopy will be determined by the sign review committee.
Yes, I think that's appropriate. Pete, well, Alex is writing those. Do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I would just point out to the board that the locationing of the new tanks has been approved by the fire department. It has been approved by the board of selectmen.
Yes, we are aware of that, thank you. On the, your provision number two on your amendment, you have, the site plan will have 12 parking spaces, including one handicap space, provided for 13 parking spaces. I'm only counting 12.
We're only having 12.
Okay, so that, that looks like it wasn't cut out of the whole thing, okay. Got a lot to cut and paste on our documents, right?
Well, no, you see, that's good, because now, obviously, it has to be changed whenever...
Yes. All right, any other questions?
Of course, that doesn't make sense that the 12 spaces include the handicap space, making 15.
That's why I was questioning it, yes.
No, it's 12 including.
I tweeted that, it didn't make sense.
We will mention that.
No, 12 including the handicap space.
That's called human error, and I'm very human.
That's quite all right. Anything else? Do you have a motion somewhere around here? Are you finishing writing your motion, Alex?
Well, I, a couple of things. Landscaping, landscaping.
Thank you, by the way, for the perspective drawings. They're very helpful to see what that would look like, and also for positioning the cars on the plan. Again, that's very helpful to see the scale of what we're looking at. And as Eddie mentioned, I did pull out some graphic standards, which we don't need, because they've changed the minimum widths that we had before, but we do have them available if some of these questions come up again. So I rated my office's resources to find these for you. But it's good to know if we have other questions on dimensions that we have a resource we When would you expect to go through the sign review committee?
Probably in the next 30 days.
Okay. Good to know. Ed, did you happen to find out whether the Sox and the Yankees were playing tonight?
I don't know if anybody knows. Guys know over there? Go find out some. It's just the weather, the question of the weather.
Yeah, they were getting thunderstorms, too.
I didn't go by well before going in.
Let's do the dimensions of the canopy.
45 by 47.
Which way is 47?
It's the way, not the angle.
The long way.
It's the way, not the angle.
Thank you. The way.
I think they deferred the start of the game until after the planning board ends.
47 is parallel to the street.
Yeah, 47 is, it's along the street, yeah.
That was very helpful of them.
The canopy, the men's depth, the canopy depth will be three feet.
Three feet.
Yep.
The center side, for safety. The center side is three feet for safety.
The little ball inside, is that what you're talking about, the depth?
No, the depth of the...
The depth.
It's a three feet.
DPH.
All around it, has to be three feet.
Oh, oh, and the ground?
No, the roof.
No, the canopy.
The height of the roof.
The roof, it's a...
The canopy depth is what I'm calling it.
Fine, three feet.
Shall not exceed three feet.
Okay.
The canopy upper facade?
It's an answer, that's what I want to know. Exactly.
Okay, so what we're going to, these are the additional conditions that I have. Landscaping in the landscaped area shown on the plan shall be approved by the planning board, installed and maintained in good condition. Delivery truck shall make deliveries on-site and not block sidewalks.
Ken?
You could say something like, delivery trucks shall be, trucks making oil deliveries shall be totally contained within the lot area.
About a not-block sidewalk.
A not-block sidewalk.
Can I?
Bill would like to...
Okay.
You want to try something?
I do, I do. Using the documents that you sent to the board.
Excellent.
If you go to the truck and trailer sizes, and you go to the allowed trailers...
Age 115.
Uh, 115. You go to each trailer, and what's allowed within the state of Massachusetts, it says it's 48 feet for a trailer and semi-trailer, tractor and semi-trailer.
Okay.
All right, 48 feet. The width of the average one is eight foot six. Piece of paper I have in my hand is that 48 feet by nine feet. The scale on this is one by 10, so it fits.
Well, I fit.
Yeah.
There is your truck.
All the traffic can go by.
Anywhere within.
Excellent.
Thank you, Bill, for demonstrating that.
But the assumption he's making is that the truck can unload anywhere in the 48 feet.
So position it, Bill, if you'll position it directly over the two pads, one there.
I can go, I can go in the driveway and be over the tanks, and that means that those fills would be just about where my middle finger is right there.
All right, and over the other pad?
In the driveway. If I pull in straight, it means that the hoses would be here or here, and I'm hitting either of these two sets of tanks.
Okay.
Excellent, and we've got 90 feet, and I've got 48. I can play with it anywhere in the middle.
But the point is that they can easily be positioned over...
The fire department's gone down and looked at it. I actually, I specifically went and talked to Brian Dougherty, the fire prevention officer, to go down and look to make sure that these trucks were not going to be in the street or on the sidewalk. He already looked at this one, he said he's already done it. He didn't realize it was happening at the other station. He is going to take and address it. This one, he said he's never seen it, he has plenty of room. This wasn't an issue. The other site is an issue, and he's not exactly sure what he can do about it, but it didn't block the lane the last couple of days, because he has been down there talking to them. I actually went by it last night, and yes, they are blocking the sidewalk. So obviously, they pushed in, but they didn't push in enough.
Good to know.
But they put in new tanks in a different location, so I'm not sure how, how and why his is doing that, but he'll have to address that.
But in the case of this particular property, there should be plenty of...
This one's also bigger. This one is 9,500, first is 87.
Well, even larger than that, if you had a solid lot and it wasn't covered.
This one's 9,500 square feet.
15.
These two, right.
Oh, just, just looking at the two out of the three parcels.
All right, you're right, this is 15.
You're forgetting one, yeah.
Right, I missed the, I was only watching one. This one actually has three lots, where the other one only has one. So you're right, this 15, this one's...
This is not the latest point. They put an addition here.
Yeah. Alex, are you ready?
Yeah.
Are you making a motion?
No, I, yeah, I, let's see, let's just see about...
Bobby.
Bobby, have you owned gas stations before? Yes, I did. Where? Quincy, 588 Adams Street in Quincy. I sold it 10 years ago. The same guy, yes. Just one station? Just one. The same guy who own now the station before me in the shop, owned the three of them at the beginning. And he's looking forward to buy this.
Where's the date on this plan?
It's June 6, and it's where it says date.
Okay, okay, got it.
So everybody at home is watching zoning on the fly here.
You might be showing it, you know, a game that hasn't been played is showing this.
See, that's what it is, is they're waiting for the Red Sox to come on, and they're watching us instead. You don't think they'll turn over, do you? I mean, they'll stay with us until the Red Sox, you know, until we're done, and then move to the Red Sox, right?
All right.
Okay.
So I would make a motion that we approve a document called Amendment to Site Plan Review, 310 Granite Avenue, and we would start with the draft given us by Mr. Sheffield. Number one, we would, at the end of that, we would say, as shown, we would, we would change site layout plan to site plan. Take out the layout. And then at the end of that paragraph, we'd say, as shown on the plan. Then we'd say the site plan, not the site plan, the site. The site will have 12 parking spaces, including one handicap space, as shown on the plan. And then, number three is going to come later. We're going to, number three is going to be a new number three, which is, delivery truck shall make deliveries on-site and not block sidewalks. Number four will be, color and signage on the canopy will be determined by the sign review committee, determined and approved by the sign review committee. Number five, the canopy shall be 45 feet by 47 feet. The canopy depth shall not exceed three feet. Number six, all construction on-site shall be in accordance with the plan without deviation unless deviation is approved by the planning board. Number seven, landscaping in the landscaped area shown on the plan shall be approved by the planning board, installed and maintained in good condition. And number eight will be, all other terms and conditions of the site plan approval granted on September 13, 2007, remain in full force and effect, except as modified herein. I guess we could add that, just to make... And then, I would ask that the chairman be given authority to sign on behalf of the board.
Okay, what's your motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, against?
No.
Okay, that's...
Those two...
Three to two.
Three to two, it fails.
Approval.
No.
It says site plan approval, it's three votes, it's all needed.
I agree. Did we have three votes? Did you vote yes or no?
I voted no.
Bernie voted yes.
Oh, you voted yes, sorry, okay, sorry. I didn't see your hand, Bernie. I thought I saw it later.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Diane?
Yes.
I'm going to give you this material.
Okay.
You give me a shot when it's ready, I'll come over and sign it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Again.
Again.
All right, any new business? In that case, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Unless you have more stuff you want to talk about, since somebody's rushing to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. See you guys.